Good evening. Today is Wednesday, September 25th. The time is 6:30 PM. And this is the West Bridgewater Border Selectment Meeting. Before we begin and stand for the pledge, please be aware this meeting is being recorded for use on the Internet in our local cable station. If you could join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right. Good evening, everyone. First item on the agenda is a vote to ratify Ben Smith's contract as a cable station manager.
Yep. So this is just a perfunctory vote, Mr. Chairman, as part of the town bylaw. The Cable Committee hires the general manager. It is paid for out of the Comcast funds on a quarterly basis, not the town tax laws. So I'll just ask you for your vote to ratify his contract as presented.
Yeah, and just real quick, I just think that the job that the Cable TV Station does in providing transparency into government and what goes on, I'm always surprised at the number of people who comment on our meetings that actually watch our meetings. Happy to do this, and just thanks to Ben and the entire staff that makes this happen. If we can do anything, we can maybe increase that transparency over the next four years. Make a motion to ratify Ben Smith's contract as cable station manager?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Vote to approve an application for a one-day liquor license for Chapel Town Brewery on Vineyard Farms. If I understand this correctly, while the agenda says the fourth, the fifth, the sixth, those are not days that we're looking for?
No.
So it would be the, this is all October, so the 11th, 12th, 13th, 18th, 19th, 20th, 25th, 26th, and 27th.
Make a motion, please.
Okay.
Yes, that's awesome. Are we ready for the motion?
Well, I mean, we have any...
Happy to answer.
So we can make the motion and have the discussion.
Oh, yeah. I'll make a motion to approve the application for a one-day liquor license for Chapel Town Brewery for the...
Second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, now it's still for questions?
Yeah. It's, how many days is this total so far for the...
It will be nine, um, six, eighteen, something like that.
Right. So it was approved nine times in the past, and before you this evening would be another nine dates for a total of eighteen.
Eighteen. Do you have a limit in town?
Well, we don't. I mean, I don't know if this is where Mr. Perez was going with it, but I will tell you that we do not have a limit. My recommendation to the board, and we could discuss it now or at a later date, whatever you prefer, is that I don't think that having multiple days, eighteen, twenty, thirty days, you're capped at thirty days by ABCC regulations, but I don't think that's really in the spirit of what our current alcohol policy is. The real spirit of a one-day liquor license is somebody has a wedding, or if there is a one-day event, a park day, so only one of these fulfills in it. We have never had the request before that did more than two or three days during the calendar year, so this is the first time that we're doing it. And there's nothing wrong with the application, there's no negative on any of that. It's just that it's up to the board because it's your policy. So if you are okay with somebody doing it thirty days per year, then we continue to bring this forward to you, and it'll be an accepted practice. However, if you don't feel that it's in the spirit of what a one-day liquor license is, we should in the future look to amend it, and that way everybody would know what the FAP target is for them.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not opposed to that, and nothing wrong with what's going on.
I've heard these discussions before.
Yep.
I'm fully aware. Different towns handle it differently. I will tell you, like Trillium in Boston gets all their dates on the greenway as one day different.
Okay.
They, and what they do is they have different people apply, so they're game in the system anyways, but Boston is allowing them to do it.
Yep.
And the ABCC, which I talk to them all the time, they're okay with it too. So, you know, I understand the concerns, but it's not, for the farm, especially these ones, you know, they need to bring the people in. It's just something else to offer to them, another opportunity to position the people for the farm.
Yep. And that's, and we're not, you know, we're not against any of it. It's just when we look at something like this, we also try to think of precedent. And while, and while, you know, the way that it's being done, I have absolutely no issue with it, but how else, you know, how else could that be done, and maybe in a not as appropriate way. So I think it's worth the discussion. It's not gonna, I don't think it'll change anything. And obviously, if we change something, we can certainly be in touch to, to what you know.
But the way it stands, we're within, say, the deposit.
Yeah, follow. Is in the motion?
Do you have a motion? Motion open?
Yep. Take a vote.
Aye.
All set? Thank you very much.
Feel free, if you have any questions you want to talk about it, and just be more than happy to comment, talking more detail about what we do, how we do it.
We appreciate that. Thank you.
Nope. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda is approve the meeting minutes for August 14th.
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes, the meeting minutes of August 14th, 2024.
Say it faster.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Next, accept the meeting minutes for September 4th for review.
Make a motion to accept the meeting minutes on September 4th for review?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Continuing to move along, next is a vote to award the transfer station contract to Memco Environmental Services, Inc.
Yep. So the contract is before you. As you know, we've been attempting to do this for the last couple of years. We have a contract that is now, will be funded from town funds and ARPA funds, and from a grant that was secured from the state, thanks to Linda did a really nice job in our office on that work. So, I mean, it'll be fully paid for, the lowest bid. They are ready to proceed. I think we all know we need to do it, and so I ask you for your vote.
Any discussion?
None. You ready for motion?
Yes.
Make a motion to award the transfer station contract to Memco Environmental Services, Inc.?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next on the agenda is a vote on town's rights of first refusal for six to eight property, which is zero Bryant Street.
So this, this came in first week of September. As you know, it has, it's by law is required to go to a couple of other boards in town that act as advisory boards for the selectmen, the planning board, the Board of Assessors, and the Conservation Commission. They have met, they have reviewed, and they have provided you their recommendations. The Conservation Commission and the Board of Assessors recommended to go forward with first right of refusal, uh, first right to purchase, and the Planning Board by a three-to-one vote voted not to proceed. What I had not seen before is that you have three other boards that are not required to receive it by law, but had copies. And so before you is the Board of Health, the Open Space, and the Agricultural Commission, who have all voted to also recommend to the Board that you move forward in purchasing the property. We also received, right before the agenda closed, a letter from the residents on Bryant Street informing that they were looking for the Board to take that same action as well. So, so that is before you. The decision does have to be made and communicated by December 8th, which happens to be a Sunday. So in all rights, we would have to do it by December 6th after Friday.
Okay. I know we have some people in the audience to talk about this, which is fine. We welcome the conversation. I'd like to open it up to the Board first. I do have comments, but I don't know if Mike or Marcy, if you want to start, you're comfortable with me starting?
I'm good.
Yeah, go ahead. Okay. So we, obviously, to echo some of what David said...
Jim.
This process, we have, we have six boards that have weighed in. The Board of Assessors was unanimous to purchase. The Conservation Commission was unanimous to purchase. The Board of Health was unanimous to purchase. The Agricultural Commission was unanimous to purchase. The Open Space and Recreation Commission was unanimous to purchase. The Planning Board, as David mentioned, was three-to-one to not purchase. In addition, some comments from some residents. I want to thank the residents for actually taking the time to send in the comment. The, the theme that I got from reading through the different recommendations to purchase, there were several that came to mind. One, the state designation of prime farmland. Number two, the part where it meets the new open space recreation plan for potential future municipal needs. Another part of the discussion was the loss of open land for residential and commercial needs, speaking over the last 10 years, how we've had very little control over any growth that's taken place in town. And this is a rare opportunity that rears its head to allow us to have some opportunity to, you know, to protect some land. And the other part was the, the land is not that far from the center of town, and it's probably the largest piece of land that's available close to the center of town, or one of the largest pieces of land close to the center of town. To throw stuff out.
Now, now.
So taking that into account, along with the fact that, you know, as, as the town experiences high growth, both on the residential side and the commercial side, there's not often much we can do. But once a piece of land's purchased and it's zoned as its own, the person or the people that purchased that land can often develop it within reason, within the zoning anyhow. In this case, this piece of property could become residential, could add some additional houses, and could add some additional expenses as we look at it towards the schools and things like that. The biggest piece for me, right here, is, you know, we are losing our identity a little bit as a, as a farm community and as a farm town. And this is an opportunity to, at this point, to preserve some land in town. I feel strongly about this with, with this property, and I, my intentions probably wouldn't change should another piece of land come up in a, in a similar situation, not too, too far from town. Keep in mind, a couple, maybe last meeting or the meeting before, we passed on a, on a vote like this because it was more over in the industrial section of town. We didn't see a purpose on it. But this is a yes vote for me, with the, with the board talking, with Mr. Macy, Mr. Burke.
Thank you.
Sure.
You're welcome. Jim Burke, my husband Charlie, and glad that you do it in front of Charlie. He is the buyer of the property. You know it's under 1618, and we know you're gonna do what you think is the best and to step, to deal with it, and we accept that in the end. I guess one of the things, Charlie's gonna stress you, and he's gonna explain his perspective and how he thinks we can make something work that would do us benefit the town and allow him to do it. But I just wanted to suggest, we ran into the same situation in Villarreal within the last year. Essentially, what happened there was the town made the decision that they were gonna move forward on the real estate. We wound up getting together with them, with the planning board, members meeting, and always working with the developers. And they actually worked out a very realistic and reasonable arrangement involving that piece of property. It wound up that Villarreal didn't take it in the system. They wound up entering into a compromise with the developers that allowed them to preserve some land, to get realistic restrained growth, and to move forward with expansion for that space, which is not a bad end result, actually. So with your permission, we're gonna let Charlie raise a few issues and adjust, uh, feedback and think for all of this. And I think you know that Charlie is a resident of this, and he's very concerned about the town. And Charlie, you?
Absolutely. My dear issue, if you need to.
Thank you. Absolutely. Thank you.
Good evening, Lloyd. I'm Mr. Charlie Macy. Thank you for the time. Right here, we have, just wanted to address a couple, a couple things regarding the park. One of them, though, I do agree with you. I understand that, you know, it is important, once land is gone, you don't have an opportunity to go back to town. Some of the proposals that I'm proposing are just that, not overburdening our, you know, the system with multiple houses, not looking to put forward cluster development, or any of those type of, that houses in. What I was trying to do, and my hope, my intention was to put a municipal on houses, to give them blocks, smaller blocks, and could actually hold. Happy to do a new restriction. Partially, my hope was in the rear part of it, to keep some of the houses on the rear part, that would be that in farmland, the part of currently farming, the part that under the city, and some, that would actually be my home stand for my family and children, et cetera. So I have no problem to keep that in perpetuity of farmland, restrictions, whatever, it's not a problem. Basically, I've, I've watched some of the meetings, and I feel like not all of the land, not all of the details have been discussed. I understand that, you know, and I've actually walked this property with, with companion conservation agents, so I'm pretty confident where the wetland line is, and we've done extensive research to actually walk that on a plan. And the plan actually, he has mentioned, twenty-three acres for a million dollars is very reasonable. However, I would like to point out that only fifty percent of this property is actually usable. You also have a twenty, a fifty-foot mill ton area in West Bridgewater. So if you looked at an aerial in the property, it is a gorgeous property. If you looked at an aerial in the property, you would actually, it looks a lot better than it really is, to be honest with you. By the time you actually, they farm into the wetlands in some areas, they farm past the wetland line, all things that according to him are allowed, allowed within farming to do so. So, an average person looking at it, I just wanna know if it's, it's different when you put, basically, you end up putting that wetland buffer and things on there. That's, a couple other things are, if you look at it, I, you know, I've heard several different things, they, are we gonna keep this as open space? Well, if we're gonna keep it in open space, in my proposal to keep a lot of it open, would do just that. We would be deserving into about the town paying for one, one option. I've also heard other things, they, is this possible for a sports complex? If you actually look at the, the engineered plans, there's, it doesn't lay out exactly the correct way to do that at all. The overlay isn't the Howard School or some of those soccer fields on it, you'll find out that it'd only be fit, and we're looking for expansion. So if you were to do that, I would recommend that we would actually need to buy the parcel next door, which is currently off the sale as well, Boston 618. So then you'd be looking at, leave us about two and a half million dollars, so you'd be looking at about three hundred, three and a half million dollars plus whatever the, the construction would be. A very high water table, it requires a lot of fill, so especially if prevailing wages, because it's what I do for a living, that's gonna be an extra, an enormous cost for the town. Just wanna be transparent. So those are most of the things in comparison to other properties. I know that you mentioned, we, we passed on one recently, which was on Maple Ave. Maple Ave, I understand it was industrial, but that, if you look at per acre cost, was, was actually a pretty good deal, and it's connected to almost twelve hundred acres. So that could have been a far, that could have been something if we were really concerned about open space, that's something that we should have explored more in the long term. So I understand we can't buy every parcel that you see. I understand that, you know, last year, at that budget, you guys did a order, I believe it was forty-something million, where it's all, obviously, nothing goes down like, it's gonna be, it's decent, obviously. So we'd be looking at purchasing this hard project, a property at over a million dollars, at a special meeting before we go to the next town meeting. So we have several costs that we could, that, that we have to look at, obviously, with several different boards, but I just feel some of the proposals that I'm offering, that kind of give us what you, exactly what you had mentioned, that your concerns are, without changing them. I've put a lot of that in this document, if you have, everybody's gonna have to look at it. I also have extensive research, including engineering plans and things. For some of the town, people that have voted for this, the Board of Health, the Conservation, they didn't have all the build specs, and nor were they gonna spend, make tens of thousands of dollars to do the research. Didn't have that research at hand, and I have a lot of that research, actually, if you have, you know, some of those plans. Just any where I've had actually, without, if you don't find it by the time you see it.
Sure.
What I wanted to show you to do is on a full-size plan, this is, this is the property. It was the fifty-foot locker, and if it can actually out here. So this area that's really usable up front is, doesn't really accommodate for like a facility or anything, especially with parking. You would actually have to supply the stormwater for drainage, and you need to have parking areas. So if that was the intent, to not keep it as open space, we really need to look at buying that parcel, maybe the wetland filling in reputation in the back. So that would actually have to all go together, which would be a significant purchase of the town. And if we're looking at it for just quite open space, that's basically what I'm offering to be able to do with the structure as well. So, I believe, I've covered the town agreement. Is there anything that I've not covered, Mr. Macy?
No, but if, if the board so, so thought it was interesting to pursue, at least the discussion, one of the ways that you could incorporate it would be to enter into the development agreement to the town. You could then, as part of the planning board process, they could make that a condition and covenant of the approved planning board. So it would make it fun, and, and, so, again, Charlie's here, he's been a long time, you see that he believes in the project, and he also believes in the town.
So, oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, it's, you can go right ahead. I, I...
I just, to, to get to the point, Mr. Macy, what do you plan on building? Like, what are your, I mean, I know you said options, but I can't digest this in ten seconds.
My, my whole sense would be that's the, so, um, yeah, it'd be that.
Oh, that was not good. All right.
My intent would be, depending on how it's laid out, put two houses up in this area, six or eight, and all of, from here back, everything there, that would be, you know, my future primary residence, you know, the kids, and keep all of that in farmland, and keep it continued. Mr. Parker that's currently farming it, still, I'm ready to go there. I, you know, have an agreement with him, that I'm not even looking for any compensation. He would continue to farm it, and he's well-respected, that's great down here in our community. So I continue a lot, a lot of that parcel, it's in, to continue to use the same way it is today.
And what happens when Mr. Parker's done?
At that point, that will be my parcel, that will stay in perpetuity. It's the farmland, gladly push these restriction on it, for my own house to be that big. So as far as open space, you can have majority, if it is open space, if that's a concern. You will have, and it's not like we're trying to say, hey, let's put one house and build here and burden our, our, you know, our, our resources. That's not what it's my intent to get. And I'm not looking at the, the, the development to try to make money, I'm looking into, that I, I have my machinery, you know, construction company, so we would be doing the work, instead of somebody that's like, you know, found it for their own wage. That's the only way that we could afford to do the parcel, if you would open that. And again, I've been looking for parcels and structures for five or six years, for this exact reason, my primary residence, and that, that would not be, be more than ours.
If you know.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, I believe this, what you got as well.
Twisted. No, lost my, did I answer the question, Mr. Chairman? Yes, I, I, Marcy or Mike, do you have other, in front of the audience?
So this, so we understand.
This side over here is, that's where investors.
Yeah, that's south street, the parking lot.
It can, and other thing to bring up, too, is far as accessibility, one of this syndrome often was subdivided, it's former, that may walk from the sub-street, it kind of really cut off this parcel from South Street, because he would be in a substantial amount of wetland crossing, which would require the armchair, which would be astronomical cost, you know, there's these deals, you get through there, and that, if, there, there's really limited access in, like Roselle or any places, and I know that's been shared with that. There is, there is even a standard, see that by the wetland line. See, you have an access right here about ninety feet, fifteen feet, which is not really gonna do you anything. And any of that parcel to be able to go through, you have a substantial amount of wetland crossing to be able to there. So you're really limited for access, it's almost one lane and out. Again, in last few words, the why this parcel, and if that's something, what I was obviously suggesting, is that it would come to figure, have to, and that's viable, but depending if, if the town willing to spend, you know, a few million dollars, a couple of million dollars, we may have to just get into a, a long, bigger of the project.
Just, just to be clear on that, until somebody bids on that property, we don't, we are not part of the game, if you will.
Oh, totally understand, though. Just letting you know, it's active on market, so eventually it will become, so, and if, thank you.
Oh, no. Thank you.
No questions?
Mike? Listen, I spend, I spend a lot of mornings on this land here, out with Mr. Parker, taking court. That picture we used for the town book this year was taken on, on that land. So I, I have, I have mixed energy, of course, but I'd love to know what, if the town is gonna buy, it will be the plan. You know what I mean? What are we gonna do with it? Because it's one thing to just say, hey, let's go buy, and let's go spend a million dollars, which, it's a good amount, right? What are we gonna do with it?
I think, I have two quick answers to that, and then obviously be more fun. One, we have the choice to do nothing with it, number one, right, which is to preserve it, leave it as it is. Find some agreement where it can continue to be farmed with the, you know, quote-unquote, with the, you know, with the soil being as good as it is for farming. Two, if we were to do that, we would prevent other things from happening, and other expenses to the town as well. I could, we could put some numbers against eight, 10 houses, probably within five or six years. If you back out the cost, you put two kids in a house, back out the cost of, you know, fifteen, sixteen grand to educate each one of those children. You could argue that the town will get that money back, relatively speaking, certainly under 10 years. The land itself could pay for itself. There's more calculations in that number, but somewhere in there, certainly shorter, fifteen, if not short of 10 years, by not having houses on there, not paying the expenses associated with children in school, and with fire, and police, and with water, and plowing, and all those other things. So by doing nothing, we are in some respects saving money. And those are some of the things that come to mind. I know there, there was a hand or two at the back, and I just want to open.
Lee Anderson, I'm the Conservation Chairman. What's the least amount of housing we can put on that piece of property up front in the location?
That's a real question. I haven't gone, I haven't gone fully into it, we're just kind of on our stage, but I would say fifteen.
You said six. Would you do, maybe like four, and keep the whole back for open space?
The, the back, on that parcel, is where I depend on putting my time.
Yeah. So if you did like four pieces, four houses, and then the rest of that property, you keep it for your house, and you play around down the road, because it's, it's a...
I, I wouldn't be, of all the, the looking at, and you know, sitting on this, kind of obviously running on the bike, figuring out what, how they're laid out, but I would probably be somewhere in that range.
And then, you know, pizza, you know, and that, consulting? Yeah, it's not, even if it comes in front of us, and there's a lot of wetland blocking.
I agree.
We, you know, a lot of, depending on when it comes, or if it does.
A hundred percent. And that's one of the things there, that I would just bring up, if the town is making a lot of first development, is just going to court, and everything else would just be such a, it's such a cost. So I'm open to, to, to do open rules and do any kind of...
So I'm open to, to, to do open rules and do any kind of, um, open space, I'm not trying to do anything else, you know, it's not my intent.
You couldn't do anything?
I, I think I'm a different method, but, but I don't know if we would do something, I'm not.
Yeah, you put on the board.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to present, that living in town, so what were you going with, is exactly my intention.
Because what we're, we're saying now, what can lead to the future of housing, to open up something else, and, and some more, or some kind of, so we're just trying to figure out if you can put the least amount, if it does work out for your favor.
Sure.
Put the least amount of housing you could put, save the rest of the, save for, for you and your family later on down the road, and leave it all back, either farmland or open space.
Sure, I'm, I'm open to have that discussion, what wants to be, thank you, thank you for hearing that, Ed.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Paula Bunker.
Sure.
But I'm here, this is me not supporting this other. Once this land is sold, it's gone, it's done, we've got nothing, even if we sit on it and just you and I have talked, once, you know, we start bringing more families in, we can't afford it, we have problems with the water, our seaward starting to get overflowed, and we need to build more pools. I, I just think bringing in more, and the residents who you do on the hub, they're looking for more open space, there's no place for the kids to go, it, it's just, I honestly think, and I, I understand what you're saying, of trying to reduce the number of houses, and, you know, and keep some of it open for this, for that, we either own it, or we don't. And I, I really hope the residents go for purchasing this property, and even if we just let it sit for a little while, to figure out what's best for it, it's well worth it, and like you said, it pays for itself, and you do the math.
And plus, you could also lease it up for the farmers that's still doing it, and make money that way, so it's not like you can, you just set that, you know, and still make money off of it. Open garden for people in the town?
A community garden, or, you know, something, you know, that's.
You could still make money off of it.
Right, and just get, because even with under sixty-one A, the taxes, I, I didn't look at the sheet before I came in, and I should have, um, but for what the firm pays under sixty-one A is minuscule, you know, so the small amount of money that we were getting under sixty-one A for it, it is dropping the bucket, it's hanging on the dollar. So we're not losing tax dollars by buying it and, and letting it sit. And everyone's gonna say, oh, the revenue from the houses, and like you said, the fifteen, sixteen thousand dollars a year that pays for one kid, they're not paying that in taxes. So I really hope the residents and the board support, you know, the purchase of this land, and we figure it out later.
Hi, Cheryl Tavitt, I'm the Tavitt Foundation, who's in town. Um, we've been talking about that movement for years, trying to find a state for us. We lost, we leave the school, we've been acting for years there, we've been in our, uh, uh, face down South Main Street, we're paying rent now, utilities, everything, it's very expensive for us. We support ourselves, we fundraise for everything, and the cost of food that has gone through the roof, our, the numbers since we left the school, our families coming to us, that can with us double, it's expensive for us. If we can find a spot, the town owns the land, and reduce of the section to us for a couple, you know, so much a year, we can still building up. We'll do a fundraiser for it, we'll be self-possessing, it will be a lot easier on everyone, and plus, we can grow into town in nice ways, so, that's kind of.
And as just from myself, I would rather see the property stay the way it is, but as being a board member, I would open to negotiations, just to be fair terms to me, because you, you know, interested in purchasing the property, we gotta be fair to them.
Aside from my personal feelings about the property, I think that the residents have the right to make that decision, so that's, that's kind of where I stand. I would love to see it stay the way it is, to be completely honest with you, I'm not really in favor of any more housing in, in West Bridgewater, if we can help it, um, certainly not, you know, multiple houses at one time, um, so, I mean, I'm not completely against the project itself, I just think that the residents have a right to vote on whether or not the town purchases that way.
Who's looking at me? Uh, you know, I've heard schoolchildren, um, school-aged kids, uh, several times today, um, and I, I don't, I personally don't, that, that was the only board that, that we sat here, and when they, the school board came here to talk about, school board, that was the only budget that we actually, uh, put a lot of questions behind. Um, so, hearing like, school-aged kids, school-aged kids, and that's such a concern, um, I mean, kids is the end of their future, and without kids, we don't have a future, you know what I mean? So it's just, it drives me kind of, I don't know, I feel some kind of energy when I hear, keep hearing, school-aged kids. Um, I, like I said, I love the land that's there, I mean, I'd love to freeze it and leave it the way it is, I'm, I'm out there almost every, I can't say it anymore, 'cause I wasn't out there this morning, but I'm out there almost every morning, um, but.
We can make your dream come true.
No, 'cause you can't be out there farming in the, in the, in the winter months. Um, yeah, I, I have mixed energy about, about this, about, about Charlie's plan, um, you know, just to, just to put it out there, I got mixed energy about it, 'cause I love the land, I like his plan, um, I mean, I'd be, I'd love to do gorgeous land for my children as well, and, and just build healthy for, for my kids, to kind of have my own little compound, and, and that land is really wet, um, so I, I've been out there, I lost my drone out there once, and, and, uh, I had a heck of a time walking through the muds just, just to find it. Um, yeah, I have mixed energy about it, um.
Yeah, I, I, I hear, I hear what you're saying, Mr. Burke, to be honest with you, I, I find the planning board to be rather plural development, and I don't think that, uh, I'm not comfortable leaving anything in the hands for the planning board to be, to be planned.
Well, I, I don't want to interrupt you, but.
Go ahead.
But I was saying, if you do reach some sort of an understanding, because you can enter into it, if they find any contact, it's enforceable, if you can put a part of that agreement, some restrictions on the land prior to the proceedings through the planning board, if there's a, look, there's a way you can make it happen, and it would, uh, it was something that would stand at that design, and you would wind up with a result of maybe half a loaf, but still, uh, it, uh, would provide, I think, pretty reasonable tax dollars on, on the new home, which, I, I don't think is mentioned, it kind of offsets some of the costs that you're talking about. You're talking about, again, a vehicle tax, you're, you're talking about participation in global markets with new people, you're talking about community involvement, none of that's bad, though.
No.
I, I, I hear what you're saying, but, uh, it, why, because if in fact, it's, it's something that you were willing to explore, and, and he's already told you more than you, that's your call.
I think, two things to that, I hear you, um, but we have several other developments going on. We have the pressure of, uh, the state with MBTA housing, there's very little we can control, there's, there's very little we have control over, and this is one of the items that we do have control over. Um, there's a, there's a piece of me, and I don't, I can't speak, town meeting procedures, and I'm looking for some guidance, um, but is there any reason why, you know, we can't bring this to town meeting, express, assuming the board, go with me for a second, assuming it moves forward, that we can express why we want to purchase this, and then also allow maybe Mr. Macy five or ten minutes to express what he was gonna do, and let the town decide what's the best for the process?
So in my opinion, it controls the meeting, but I would certainly have a conversation with him, because I think, in my personal opinion, not only is Mr. Macy the potential buyer, he's also a resident in town, so I think, you know, within reason, certainly five or ten minutes, I think he should have every right to be able to speak and explain to the town what he's looking to do.
Yeah, I agree on, on that. Mr. Anderson?
You nailed it, Joe. If we buy this property and just leave it, there's gonna be building going on in town in the middle of the, some divisions going in, so, people are gonna be coming in the middle of the, we're giving throughout the year, it's, it's, we're, families, it's.
I got nothing, let's, let's move along.
At this point, um, would be, what's, uh, voting on the town's right of first refusal for sixty-one A property, uh, zero Brian Street, just to be clear, um, what we're voting on ultimately leads to the, um, if it were to pass, would lead to a requirement of a special town meeting, at which point the residents of the town would ultimately make the decision on this property. Um, so with that, I will entertain a motion to vote.
I make a motion to. Town's right of first refusal for sixty-one A Brian, sixty-one A property, zero Brian Street, uh, for the town, to vote whether, uh, the question will end or not.
So just to be clear, you know.
You wanna amend my motion?
Correct.
That's the word.
You're, you're either declining the option, or you're moving the option in acceptance to go forward. So it's really, either the board is declining its option, and therefore the process stops, or you're moving the process forward to town meetings, it's an appropriate motion would be then, to, um, to move, move, to move it forward to town meeting, and not decline.
So we're looking for votes to move it forward to town meeting. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
That's the people of the town vote.
So is, is that three zero, or is that two one?
Sure, three zero.
Three zero, two.
To Macy, I will talk to the town administrator, uh, town administrator, that is the town administrator, but the town moderator, um, I'm open, you know, to ultimately putting this, obviously, at this point, we're putting this in front of the town.
Sure.
Um, and that, you know, it's not something that we go out there and campaign for, or anything along those lines, it's, um, for the sentiments we've discussed, that's kind of where we're at.
Thank you all, I appreciate everybody with. Thank you for taking the time.
Thank you, I appreciate the time and the questionnaire.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Got notes everywhere today, please bear with me for a moment. Next on the agenda, um, it obviously ties back to what we just discussed with a vote, uh, or a discussion on, on special town meeting, um, we have to set a date for town meeting, and that date has to be prior to December eighth. I know that, um, the selectman's office has been trying to set a date with the school, um, for the use of the auditorium, we've hit a few roadblocks due to the election, and some other things along those lines, so I don't think we have a, a date to put forward at this point, um, but we have a meeting on October sixteenth, where we, we should have a, a date that, uh, both the town clerk, the school, and obviously ourselves, completely, and the finance committee can be present for it. Um, so with that in mind, I'm gonna hold on that, I just wanted to explain that real quick. Um, the next thing that we need to do is open a special town warrant, um, my recommendation is we open it today, um, my recommendation is we set a closing date of October ninth by noon, um, and that'll give us time to have that warrant information in and reviewed for our October sixteenth meeting, where we can determine whether or not we want to place any additional items on the warrant, that doesn't prohibit the board from doing something additional in the future, should something else pop up that we couldn't add to it, but that, uh, that would open it up for any other departments in town, if they might have something else they want to place on the warrant, so, um, any discussions?
Is that enough days? I have it open.
It is.
It's just there. Let's see, I'm counting ten, isn't it?
Could open it today and close it tomorrow, I think, if we want. Okay. Um, so with that, I'll entertain a, a motion, uh, to open the town meeting warrant. Do we need to call for a town meeting without the date at this point?
So it's my, normally, that's the normal practice, but at this point, since we don't have the date, and we want to be able to notice the town, and our department has this quickly as possible, I think it's wise to open the warrant, uh, recognizing we don't have the exact date yet, and then we'll vote on a date on the, on the sixteenth. I'm unaware of any legal requirement that we have to have the date in advance.
Do we need to vote that, yes, we're gonna have a town meeting without the date? That be, no?
Um, you know what, there's no harm in doing that.
Okay. So why don't I first entertain a motion, um, to, uh, to hold a special town meeting, the date to be determined, but most likely in, you know, mid, I think, November, December timeframe, um, and at this point, the date will be determined at the October sixteenth meeting.
Will have to be done before, which day?
December sixth.
Well, the sixth is the Friday, right, so the eighth is the Sunday.
Yeah. So I'll take a motion to, uh, to call for a special town meeting, the date to be determined, but no later than December sixth.
Make a motion to set a special town meeting, uh, prior to December sixth, if that's clear.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, at this point, I'll entertain a motion to open, uh, a warrant for the special town meeting, and we'll open that effective, uh, at the conclusion of today's meeting, and, uh, we will close that warrant, um, on October ninth at twelve P M. So I'll entertain that motion.
I make a motion to open the, uh, special town meeting warrant, uh, today, December the twenty-fifth, and ought to be closed on October the ninth.
At twelve P M.
Twelve P M.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you all for your participation and discussion in that, um, and thank Mr. Macy and Mr. Burke for a good discussion as well. Um, next, uh, we move on to communications and reports from boards, commissions, thank you, Lake and town officials, um, the first item on that agenda is to vote to, uh, appoint Paula Bunker to the historical commission. Hi, Paula.
Hi, Paula. I make a motion to appoint Paula Bunker to the historical commission.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you, Paula.
Thank you. Thank you again, Paula. All right, moving along, uh, next is a vote to appoint Phil McNulty as the Record Access Officer for the DPW.
Make a motion to appoint Phil McNulty as the Record Access Officer for the DPW.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Paula and Cheryl, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Uh, next is a tri-town parade, uh, committee notification, and.
No, no, you.
Aye.
So we do this every single year for Veterans Day, the, the West Bridgewater's rotate, and so this year, it will be in Bridgewater on November eleventh, historically, the board and myself march on that date. Last week, there, last year, there was some, some conflicts, or I think it was only Mike who actually did it. Um, one item of note is that one representative from each town's board usually speaks, historically, it's always been the chair, although where Mike is a veteran, I don't know as to whether or not the board would, would defer to allow Mike to speak if he's willing to do so, so, uh, we do, I do need to communicate that to our town clerk, because that way, it will be posted as part of the flyer, so it's whatever the board would prefer.
I am a hundred percent supporting one, our selectman that is a veteran, to hold the honor, if that's not the, an uncomfortable position.
Well, I'll be there.
I've never heard you shy away from speaking?
Never.
Second.
Sure, thank you very much.
So, no, I, I, all kidding, I know we joke, but, um, sincerely thank you for your service, and it should be your honor and privilege, um, to speak, and it'll be ours to listen.
Absolutely, thank you, I'll be there.
Speaking.
We'll be listening.
All right. Public comment period. No cats, no dogs, no nothing this meeting, Paula?
No, I'm gonna go home, so, no, so, no, friends with me tonight.
Okay, very good. We'll move on to town administrators' report.
Sure, thank you. So first is the, um, the intergovernmental agreement with the block in area transit. So historically, we have always. So historically, we have always leased a van with the council eighteen through the block in area transit. Um, it is a van similar to the one that we have purchased at town meeting, but you know it was two years ago, we're still a year away from actually receiving it, and we have always usually run two vans. The nice, the, the nice issue with having this van through DAT is that they pay for all costs, including maintenance up to a certain level, it is for five years or a hundred thousand miles, which all comes first, uh, and so it really is no cost to us, so it gives us the additional flexibility to be able to use it. There is one restriction with it that's noteworthy, which is it can only be used for seniors. So there is many times that the council eighteen may do intergenerational events, and if somebody is over, under sixty, they actually can't be transferred on it, that's why we have to use our own data time as well. So usually this agreement I would sign, except that it gives a multi-year agreement, it requires the board's approval and signature, so if there are any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them, if not, I will ask you to approve and then sign the agreement in front of me.
Pretty much sounds like a no-brainer.
Yes, thank you. Any motion for that, or just to decide?
I would ask you to take a motion.
Okay. Make a motion to approve the BAT intergovernmental agreement as presented?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Um, so a whole bunch of FYIs at this point. Uh, one of your chief functions is, is that you get to set the tax rate with the board of selectmen. A lot of people think that this actually sets the tax bill, that is not the case. Um, your tax bill is predicated on what town meeting, the residents have decided to spend in May, and then it is up to the board of assessors to inform the board of selectmen as to what the classification of expense is going to be, and you can move it from one classification to another up to a state limit. So that will be held in November, we have already notified the board of assessors, uh, and we are required by law to post for it as well, so again, just an FYI to this board. Um, also, really good news is that we have a past resident, very impressive if we get to read his story, um, that Mr. Titchy apparently, um, graduated from us, our class of nineteen sixty-three, he was entirely blind, he went on to, um, go, he went on to college at Harvard, uh, and has been a public school teacher and has since retired, he lives in the city, and wanting to give back to the town of West Bridgewater, he has donated fifty thousand dollars of his own money to the use of teacher scholarships. So, um, talk about, we all have adversity in life, but when you read his story, he's just done a very, he's done a tremendous job. And although we apply a lot of resources to our children today, they go with the resources that were available in the nineteen fifties as a blind person, and being able to go on to college, and according to his story, he's the first blind teacher in the state of Massachusetts public education system. So really, a fantastic story, and we're really, you know, just grateful for him. And now he's giving back. So whenever money as a gift is brought into the town, the board of selectmen are required by law to accept it as a gift of donation. The money has been received, it will be forwarded into a scholarship fund, of which the school department at that point will administer and manage it under the directions of what we have set up the father's scholarship trust. So at this point, I would ask you for a vote to accept the donation from Mr. Titchy for that scholarship.
Motion to accept the donation from Mr. Titchy for the scholarship.
All in favor?
Aye.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. It is, you know, reading his letter, it's a fantastic story, and, um, congratulations, you know, on, on everything he achieved, you know?
FYI as well, um, it has already been communicated out to the town, but as you know, the water department did have to increase their rates, so it was an FYI to the board. After that, I will ask you for two approvals, and normally it doesn't happen this way, but we have two one-day liquor licenses that because we, we, we changed our schedule, um, so, uh, we had, we made a decision to approve these one-day liquor licenses, but it does require the vote of the other board. So one was for the Lions Club, the other one is for a charity softball game, and please note on the charity softball game, it was thought to have been held this past weekend, um, however, because of the rain, it will be held on October sixth. But I will ask you for a, a vote for both of those. Both of you.
Need a motion?
Make a motion to approve Black Cat Brew Works one-day liquor license for Lions Club Fall Fest December fourteen, twenty twenty-four, and...
Vote to approve Coach Kid's charity softball tournament one-day liquor license, one-day entertainment license for us to use December twenty-first, twenty twenty-four.
And October sixth.
October sixth.
Which is what they're ending.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. FYI, there'll be a turkey trot on November sixteenth, which is an annual race. Um, you may recall that earlier in the year, I brought to the board that we had an opportunity to be able to have a cyber assessment done at no charge to the town. So they spent about sixty-five to seventy days doing that assessment, looking over our protocols, and put in testing our system. Um, they came back with a handful of recommendations, and one of the recommendations is, is that we use a gmail dot com email address, as opposed to a dot gov email address. And the benefit of using a dot gov email address is that by switching over, is that we tie into a central partnership where they help at their cost the cybersecurity and cybersecurity maintenance. So really, to use the term that Mike used earlier, but a different term, it just becomes a no-brainer, right? I mean, if we can partner with the best in the business in reference to cybersecurity, and not to mention at the same time, because everybody worries about phishing, uh, phishing emails at this point, when they see a dot gov email, they know that it's true and accurate coming from us. So it will take some time for us to make that transfer, there is a cost involved, but we will start the process. Um, I'm not looking for a vote, if you are against it, then obviously I'll stop the process, but based on that recommendation, um, I have told the IT department that I thought it was wise to follow it and to move forward. And the last is, is that again, we've had a little bit of a, a non-traditional schedule for a couple of different conflicts, and as a result of first meeting not occurring, the next meeting will be on October sixteenth.
Mike, anything else?
I got nothing.
Then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.